Close to five o'clock. At this time, I'll call the Perry City Council work session for Monday, November the 18th, 2009, for you to order. We do have a quorum. Item three or as items of review and discussion. Item three A is from the office of the city clerk. Three A one is establishment of the council's 2020 meeting calendar. Ms. Warren, I think you're leading that discussion.
Yes, sir. Good evening, your council. In your board pack, you'll find a draft copy of the proposed calendar for the 2020 year, and you will be hearing advice if this is a second order.
Are we going to remove the work sessions on holidays from January 20th and February 17th?
I didn't think we would. It's the work sessions on the 20th of January and February 17th fall on holidays, so the office will be closed that period of time, and we will not meet on those days. We will meet on January the 21st and February the 18th for pre-council and council meetings. That appears to be the only days that we've, that we have holidays fall this year?
Yes, sir.
Is there any questions or concerns relative to their plan?
This is on holiday, April 2nd.
Oh, I'm sorry, it sounded, sounded as absurd.
Is that your birthday, Bill?
Yes.
I figured out what you were doing, I'm gonna go back.
Andy, could you put a hard copy of this in my box, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We're here, please.
Is there any questions or concerns relative to the calendar?
Good to meet.
Okay, is it, you're all in concurrence, so those are immediate?
Yes.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes, sir.
It's like a decent issue.
That's up to the council. It doesn't appear to be interfering with the Christmas holiday, because that's, we'll be meeting on the 16th and 17th, so it'll be a good 10 days before Christmas, so it's up to council where, Mr. Gilmore, do you, of your opinion, do you think there'll be business to conduct, or should we wait and see after the first meeting?
I think you might need to wait and see. Usually, we don't have too much, the only thing we need to be kind of careful on, if we can, is anything coming from community development, like rezoning requests or something like that. Most of the other type of stuff, you're able to escape.
Can we just put it on hold then, Mr. Gilmore, until after the meeting on the 3rd, and then we'll make a decision on the meeting on the 3rd, is whether, whether to meet this, maybe we won't meet the, for the work session, but work for regular council?
Yeah. He's not gonna do it.
Might not.
There's just been some years we did some...
Yeah, because we were following the week of Christmas, and so different times, yeah. But that far out...
That's right, somebody, it's 16, 17, you're waiting, you know, sort of...
Yeah, eight days.
Right.
Give us plenty of time to do our Christmas shopping. Okay? We'll discuss that at our December 3 meeting. Item three B is the office of the city manager, and three B one is the city's presentation at the Georgia Department of Community Affairs annual meeting in La Grange. Mr. Smith?
Mayor, Mayor and Council. Just fine, I'm great, says I have 10 minutes, so I'm gonna go through this pretty quickly. You were probably made aware that the mayor and I were asked to speak at the most recent Georgia Department of Community Affairs conference in La Grange. That's the same conference, we got those wonderful big checks out there with all the money, but we were asked to speak to the group in regards to our planning successes. As you're aware, we're a plan-first community, and that comes with a lot of, a lot of responsibilities, but it's very favorable in regards to how we're seen as a, from the Department of Community Affairs, from other communities, and they wanted us, along with the city of Thomasville, to be able to sit in front of these folks and talk about all our successes, what we do, all that type of thing. It was a great experience, I'm sure as an American attest to, probably about 100 folks in attendance, which is very good for an 8:30 a.m. conference session, I must tell you.
You were standing around, huh?
It was, it was, and we had about 45 minutes, followed by some Q and A to go through our presentations, and I'd like to show you all what we went through and what we presented to the group. Again, we wanted to, it seems like it's on timer or something, we wanted to, yeah, it's on timer of some sort, I don't know what the deal is. We wanted to take folks through our planning initiatives, where we've come from, where we're growing, where we've been, what we're doing, all that types of things, and this is the part where the mayor got up and gave his wonderful mayoral, "We're the city of Perry, you know, we're awesome," that type of thing.
And we are.
And we are. And kind of getting into it, this really is what the city has been working towards for a while now, is we want to have in place executable plans, plans that have been put together through a lot of community support, the input from the staff, and really just moving forward in a direction that positions us for the future. And again, you know, y'all seen this countless times, one of the department heads, employer or somebody, that'll come to y'all asking for some sort of resource, you know, some money, a position, some equipment, that type of stuff, and y'all always kind of look back, and you're like, "Well, how does this relate back to our strategic plan or our comp plan?" And if it doesn't, it's gonna be a relatively difficult sell. So our plans, to get, I don't know why it's doing this, but together, these plans, our strategic plan, our comprehensive plan, form a framework in which the city operates, and to collectively, you know, they work well together, because they each have their different focuses. So the joint comp plan, that is what we're required to put together in five years from the state and the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, that's really what predicates a lot of the plan-first initiative and everything like that. And then our strategic plan, which is our more focused local plan, and really provides a lot of information, kind of in-depth information to y'all when you're putting in your budgets, that type of thing. The joint comp plan, again, we have to consider ourselves in the greater context of Houston County, in the greater context of middle Georgia. How do we work together to achieve results for everybody? Where's the city of Perry fit in on these initiatives? It's a shared vision. We don't always share the same vision with our partners, with our sister cities here in Houston County, with county, with middle Georgia communities, but we do work during the comp plan process to try and come to some sort of agreement in regards to what direction we're heading in, and then, of course, that's long-term, we're looking at 20 years for the comp plan. Now, for the strategic plan, again, more focused, what is the city doing? What can we control in regards to where we're going, and what services we provide, what initiatives we're working towards? And again, that goes back to the whole city-driven thing, and this is something that I think we've discussed over the years in regards to, the city is gonna set the tone for our community. We're not gonna wait for outside organizations to come in and do something that we're looking at doing, we're not gonna wait to partner up with all these other organizations to make something happen in our community, the city's gonna do it if we think it's valuable and worth doing. And then an operational focus, this is really getting down into some of the stuff, you know, y'all have all seen the strategic planning document, you see how it has timeframes, departmental responsibilities, budgets, all that type of stuff, so really being able to take a look at the services we provide and plan accordingly. There's supposed to be a wonderful graphic right here, I promise. But when doing and going through our planning processes, there are four kind of overarching themes that y'all are working within, that you expect the city to operate through. The first is responsiveness. Again, we want to be able to be responsive to the current age of the community, but also plan for the future. You seek a lot of citizen input, you seek a lot of input from your staff, and that seems to be a very good process, making sure that our, our plans really reflect what the city desires. Accountability, this is something that, you know, y'all are constantly looking at, the money that we're spending, the initiatives, we're, we're moving forward. The budget process is a really good example of accountability, because y'all scrutinize each of those, each of those line items, and make sure that what is being funded is, again, in accordance with our planning process, and then, of course, autonomy, we can't rely on outside organizations to do things, we're gonna do it ourselves. And this is really where the mayor shined in regards to talking about where the cities come from in the past 10 years. You know, it was kind of just an interesting timeline of events that led y'all to where you are now, and I, I think, looking back, you kind of see that 2009 water shut, which had a significant amount of elected official turnover, and then, kind of moving past that, you know, have, getting geared up for what's to come, y'all put together the first strategic plan with Ms. Bass when she was in the economic development director role in 2013, 2014, and then from that, y'all have really been acting on a ton of those initiatives that were first identified as key priority areas. So you became a GID community in 2014, that drives a lot of what the city's been doing in regards to housing, community development, the strategic plan update, you know, we're supposed to be doing every couple of years, the joint comp plan with the county and the other cities, becoming a plan-first community in 2017, 2018, and then, of course, another strategic plan update 2018, and there obviously will be more to follow. When going through the planning process, in the strategic planning process specifically, y'all identified six key areas that you wanted to focus on, and it's your belief that through focusing on the six key areas, you create, created a comprehensive, I guess, set of offerings, programs, initiatives, whatever, whatever you wanna call them, that's gonna get the city to where y'all see the city being, and fulfilling y'all's vision for the city. And you can see them up here, we're gonna go a little bit into each of these in regards to some of the successes that have been born out of the planning process for these areas, but in the end, you hope to get growth and, and smart growth, not just growth for growth's sake, you know, that's something that y'all have always been very much focused on, you're not taking everything in, you know, whatever we can get type of thing, y'all really look at what's coming to the city and determine it's in the best interest of the city, and that kind of segues into quality of life, you know, that's something that y'all have been very much focused on, and it's one of the ways that which y'all have deemed the city be able to be competitive in the future. You know, how do we compete with the metro area that's gaining more and more influence? You know, the increasing atlantization of the state, one of the ways we can do that in the city is through our quality of life, because some people want something different. And then, of course, engagement, that's always something y'all are big on, you give a lot of opportunities for the public to come in and speak to y'all, you know, you answer your phones, it's direct line to the citizens to y'all, and I think that's something that we all should be very proud of, and then, of course, sustainability. If y'all are gonna plan on doing something, and y'all are gonna fund something, you wanna know how it's gonna be sustainable, how are you gonna be able to continue to provide that service in the future? And again, kind of looking at the six key areas, again, very much focused on leisure, recreation, that quality of life component that's so important, y'all made some very significant investments in that regard, most recently, the large park purchase, some of the other park projects you're working on, and again, when we were explaining these to the folks in the room that day, these were some of our big successes, and each of the things that I'm gonna be showing y'all through these next couple of slides are things that were planned for, and now are finally coming to fruition, so you can see some, you know, how successful your planning process has actually been, some of the new park spaces, playgrounds, and then, again, offering something for everybody and trying new things. You want to hit everything with demographics, so this past year, we heard, "Hey, we might want some track and field type activities to be offered through our leisure services program." Alright, let's try it out. You know, that's one of the sections of our community, one of the, I guess, interest groups, if you will, in our community wanted to see. Diverse revenue sources, that was something, again, going back to y'all's desire to be equitable in regards to how you spend money, sustainable, but also, you know, being able to take advantage of what's available, looking at what's out there in regards to possible revenue streams, and exploring those revenue streams. They might not always work, they might not always fit for our community, but you at least explore what's out there, and you've done an excellent job with that with the fire fee, and when you see something that y'all think is worth nurturing, you've been able to incentivize that. So you've got the hotel motel tax, right? That's a really nice stream of income for the city, and y'all saw it beneficial to incentivize hotel development, to make sure that that stream is there, and that it grows with the community. And, of course, been very, very successful with reaching out and grabbing some of the state and federal dollars that are available with grant programs. Community engagement's always been a big one, y'all, and it's one of those things, you know, you hear some folks talk, like, "Well, there's been that, you know, there's not been a ton of engagement," whatever, but the opportunities are there, and y'all really provide more opportunities than most communities in regards to citizen engagement, receiving input from the community, and you've done that through public forums, most notably, and perhaps driving this whole process, been technology. And you've implemented your, your city program, which educates the community about what's going on in the city, hopefully develops people to volunteer on boards, and then, in regards to social media and stuff, it cannot be overstated how important that has been for y'all, for the city, in regards to reaching that target demographic, and it's beyond Facebook, of course, and it's a variety of social media platforms, all the way up to our, you can see here, our app, which has been wonderful in regards to reaching out to our folks, receiving input from them, and engaging. Can't really read that, but community development was another folks area, and this is something where y'all saw the city needing to be very customer service oriented and customer service friendly. Again, not growth for growth's sake, but working with developers, working with builders, working with the commercial community, industrial community, making things happen, and looking at it comprehensively. You look at housing, the GID program, you're looking at code enforcement, you're looking at a variety of different ways through which we grow our community. And, of course, service provision. This is kind of the bread and butter for local government, this is where, this is the reason that people enter into cities and local governments. Fire, you know, fire protection, police protection, public safety, utilities, all that type of stuff is key to what we do on a daily basis and providing those services. So what do people need, what do people want? Is it sustainable? Of course, everyone wants a little bit of everything, and it's been very difficult in the face of rising costs with increased demands for y'all to have to make the important decisions that y'all are having to make, but you've done an excellent job in making sure that we plan for these, so when the decision time comes, we have to make the decision, you have some excellent planning and data and that type of stuff in the background to assist y'all. And again, you know, the, the replacement schedule for police vehicles, the offering of recycling services, and the new water plant, that's all been planned, that's, you know, that's 10 years in the making there, and it's just now getting going, so. And then economic developments, of course, is a part of the growing vibrant community, going after what you want, taking care of what you have. Y'all have been very much focused in working with the SARS department in regards to traditional recruitment, traditional retention of businesses, making sure that our businesses are here satisfied, they're able to produce their product, provide their service here in the city, but also making sure they're able to grow when they need to, and going out and reaching and getting new businesses here in the community. And again, going back to the hotel example, y'all incentivize this stuff. You know, and it might not, it might be monetary, in the case of Sandler, we all provide significantly discounted gas rates, you provide a lot of money in regards to infrastructure development for them, but it doesn't always have to be that type of traditional incentive. For instance, here, when Tractor Supply was coming into town, y'all saw that there was a road leading to that business that was less than stellar, you went there and decided to make a significant investment to bring that road up to where it needs to be, so that they're able to benefit from our infrastructure. You know, things like that. A lot of matching private investment with public investment, which has proven successful. This picture's more or less kind of a joke, but looking towards the future, right? What are we gonna be doing over the next five, 10 years in regards to planning? Right now, we are a designated plan-first community, we're a GID community, and we're a Bain Street. Those are three of the four primary planning initiatives that the state puts forth and designations that you can receive, so we're doing very well in that regard, and the last one we have is a water-first designation, and if we receive the water-first designation, which we're working on, and being good stewards of water resources, we'll be one of only three communities in the state to have all four planning designations from the state, so that's a very, very big deal, and something to be proud of. Reinforcing the culture of planning, I have a feeling that when January rolls around, we're gonna be hitting some planning efforts hard, so look forward to that and really reinforce that culture throughout the organization that, "Hey, we're gonna be planning for our future, and we're gonna start planning for it now." We have had some elected officials turn over, we'll continue to have some elected officials turn over, but bringing those elect, new elected officials on board, and making sure they're abreast of what we've been planning for over the years, and hoping to get their input moving forward, and again, the strategic plan refresh, that kind of goes back to what I was talking about, hitting hard January, so look forward to it. Very condensed version, very condensed version, but I hope y'all get an idea about the presentation that we will provide, it's very, very well received at the conference, being able to sit up there with, you know, Thomasville is a thrill, as you can imagine, and we actually received a lot of excellent comments and questions and that type of thing afterwards, so it was, it was very good. Any questions on that? That was pretty quick, Mr. Gilmore.
Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Impressive with, we are doing this, or is it planned by the council? All the credit comes back to this group and the staff for all the hard work they've put into that. Item three B two is discuss possible adjustment to on-call policy. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, also in your board pack is a memo from me recommending that you authorize adjusting our on-call process. Currently, with on-call is used by Public Works, Police CID, and also Leisure Services, I, that university left them off, but they do it too. Process is the same, in which an employee is on-call for one week's time, they receive two hours of pay for Saturday, two hours of pay for Sunday, if they're called out, they receive at least an hour's pay, plus if it's more than an hour, whatever additional time it is that they're called out on. One of the things that's come to our attention is, not only is there expansion with the city and more things going on, but we're also having to compete with some of our employees who have other part-time jobs, that possibly being on-call can be a difficulty, so the administration is recommending to you to make an adjustment, which would be to add one hour per weekday for on-call, and then the rest of the process would remain the same, so they still have the two hours on the holiday, but they would have five additional hours, Monday through Friday.
Questions, Council, relative to the recommendation? Any questions or concerns?
Any of the department heads agree or disagree with this? Or are they thinking?
Mr. Smith has seen it, it originally came from his department, and we talked about it with Cedric and Chief Lynn at our management team meeting Friday. Far as I know, though, they're free to speak if they have any objections or anything to that.
Stephen Rodriguez?
Good. I agree.
Yes, sir, I think it'd be beneficial, going back to what Mr. Gilmore said, there's a opportunity cost situation here with a lot of the employees in the part-time jobs, so to be able to compensate them a bit more for their actual on-time time, I think would be beneficial.
I think, one thing I think it kind of moves up the morale, make, make your party feel good too, I think, I think that's a really essential for them, you know, they're gonna need to keep needs up, extra money.
Mr. Gilmore, they already are called out like three times a year, I mean, their on-call happens to be three times a year or something like that.
Well, it depends on the department.
Yeah.
For example, in Public Works, with the number of people they have who are on-call, it's probably about three times a year or so. With the police, it's more often than that, because they only use, I think it's the detective section are the ones that are on-call, and then, of course, Cedric's department depends on season load and number of employees available.
So do we have a concurrence from Council to move forward with this increase in the pack?
Yes.
You have concurrence, no fault, thank you.
Employees, thank you, Council members.
Item three B three is consider adjusting bid review limits. Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. Mayor and Council, also in your board pack is a memo from me requesting that you all consider increasing the bid review limit. Bid review limit is where it has to come back to Council. We're not talking about changing the bidding process, I want to emphasize that, but we're recommending that for maintenance items, that you authorize it to go from the $3,000 to $12,000. What brought this to mind, you may remember at your last meeting, we had to do a quick replacement with the HVA system in here, and the limit that you currently have for most of these activities is just too low for what we have to deal with. We're not talking about changing it for anything else, so in other words, like your fixed assets, like vehicle, you know, any of that type of stuff, that all still come to you, but if it's a maintenance replacement type of issue, we're recommending that you authorize it to go to 12. If you feel 12 is too high, then to 10, or you see what I mean, but the current limit is just not workable. You do have the issue about, an exception is for emergencies, but as the city attorney reminded me, emergencies is very limited and defined about what can be done. So for example, going back on the HVAC unit here, yes, it's a problem, yes, it needs to be addressed, it needs to be addressed quickly, but it would not qualify for an emergency underneath our orders.
I don't know how haunted it gets, I'm sorry. Well, I think, I think that's a good point, because like you said, if it's gonna be in-house, something going on, if we got, it sounds already set in place, then you know you can go ahead and take, you know, take care of, basically, you know, with that average unit or some other unit you have to deal with. I think that'll be good, because before, we had the law, and then you have to come, and you had to get some more money, and then we go out and bid, I think we'll be able to be, sell it from the home around, that we can be able to try to take care of it.
And flying off of Mr. King's point, we still be going through the same bidding process, it's just that if you okay this, if it's a repair or a maintenance item, only that limited category, then up to $12,000, it could be okayed by the department head and the manager. After some funding issue or something with that, like on all that type of bidding stuff, then we come back to you, you know, to have that addressed.
So you're comfortable with $12,000, you're moving from $3,000 to $12,000?
Yeah. And why I ask why you'd be $12,000 instead of $10,000? Because that HVAC unit was more than $10,000 to start off.
I think that's the thing, is the size of the units and everything they have here, in most cases, are more than $10,000 and so.
Now, it's not just for the HVAC units, okay, but that's, that's a very good example.
But you know what, I think, like you said, the prices are changing on things, I think, like us here, we'd be comfortable in saying that, and going back, well, Mr. Rogers said, a lot of times, we understand that position, like he asked why not $10,000, but, you know, we put $10,000, and then you come back there, "Hey, we need some more money," but if we can get it to the range, and I think, and I appreciate you guys for being there, I think we have to keep our focus and make sure that, sometimes people don't understand the prices, you know, I mean, we, I'll just give a little example, we have Thanksgiving there on Thursday, and if people paid $10, or $10 for Thanksgiving, you know, wasn't enough, so we should've got more, and everybody started complaining, that's a little bit too much, but if you go and find out what the prices are, you know, that's, that was totally, you know what I mean, so that's something that we just, I appreciate you guys or whoever coming up with it, because I mean, I think, going back to the math point, I think it's comfortable, I think we all kind of think on a reasonable tone here, that we can understand that, you know what I mean?
Seems like a reasonable amount for the type of maintenance work that you guys did bring to us, I mean, if, if it's a capital item, we're gonna see it regardless, but if it's just normal maintenance that you've gotta get done, then most of the services that you bring forward are $12,000 or higher, in most cases, because of that.
I suggest, if doing this, anything that's unusual, I think, you report, report to us the question, and so we...
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable request, that you're aware of the expenditure anyway. Any other comments or concerns? Mr. Jones? You're awful quiet over at night.
Well, no, I'll just add that if the HVAC had not have been repaired, and Phyllis would have been upset, Phyllis being upset is more insignificant. Emergency for that whole side of the city.
Exactly. If there's no more questions or concerns, we'll move forward. Do we have concurrence, does this need a, at Council tomorrow night?
I'll check, see, I don't think so.
Well, you have a concurrence to move forward, or we'll vote on it tomorrow night.
Okay, with the entity about the report to Council.
Thank you. Item four is Council member items. Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones? Yes. Mr. Hunt?
Yes, one little, a housing place, little small room that turns off at 3:41. The last house on the right, we get to the very colored, second one turns, doesn't pass one single color that we get. It needs something done, and I'll leave any one of you and all of you, if you go out there and look at it, if you'll agree with it.
Mr. Gilmore, would you?
I will follow up. I know our code enforcement people have been out there, I know citations have been issued for it, I don't know what the current status is.
I wouldn't give you a house number, but it's not up either.
No, I'm very familiar with the house that Riley's talking about, that some folks asked to come by there, and he's right, it's a mess.
It is, and we've been working on it the last couple of years, it is. You should have seen it two years ago.
It'd take two years to clean it up.
Oh, no, it's, it's a, it's a difficult situation. And, uh, code enforcement is working on it, we'll follow up on it. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Anything else? Mr. King? Miss Bond and Grace?
Smith Drive, uh, up near where the hotel, um, will be, it's two or three bumps. And the folks have been asking, are we gonna repair the road since we have that new hotel coming right there? But it's right behind, it's closer to the hotel than it is to...
The bar, yeah, the bar is, yeah, sure.
Uh-huh, it's, uh-huh.
It's clear there was a big waterfall.
Uh-huh, yeah, it is, uh-huh. And so it's really bad, and I understand. I wrote today just to see what they're talking about. And you didn't really have to go to the opposite side of the road in order to, to avoid all that, yes.
We, we will do some prelim on that. You may remember, you approved that street as one of your streets for the, uh, LMIG program for the upcoming year.
And second thing, on that same road, um, someone has used an opp, been using the opposite, opposite side of the road as a dump, pretty dear close to, um, the gym, but across the street.
It's not a dump. There's some beating living in there.
Well, anyway, they saw all that debris and trash, and they imported that also. It's, you look back at it, nasty, man.
Yeah, that's all. That's all, thank you, appreciate that.
They shall be addressed, Miss Bond and Grace.
Mr. Gilmore, anything you would like to add this evening?
Yes, just as a follow-up. You remember at our last, I think it was pre-council meeting, we talked about issues that possibly some of the plumbers had about flushing out the lines and the cleanup valves, I remember that discussion. Uh, and when we left from there, your, uh, or at least my understanding of your position was, uh, number one, that, uh, you would make not a definitive decision what you wanted to do until I got back with you and let you knew what happened with the meeting with plumbers group, which is supposed to take place the next couple of days after the meeting. And then the second thing was that, uh, installing the cleanouts was to continue because of some of the problems and stuff that would have impacted. That's my understanding. Um, number one, uh, the plumber groups and everything never got back with me. I never heard anything back from them at all. The second thing is, and I know it's happened at least twice since you all met, about, uh, calls to us dire concern about not being able to get a plumber in time and having blocked up lines, so they can't do anything with their, with, with their house. Or business, whatever case may be. This particular case, I think, was Holmes, but, um... So what I'd like to, uh, recommend to you all is that we go back to what our standard policy was before, which is that we will have ESG, because they are licensed and qualified to do that, even if it's on private property, to go back and do the flushing out of the lines where they can to determine, like with a camera going in to see what the problem is. And if there's a problem with the line itself, remember like we talk about roots or the line sinking or whatever, then the owner, the renter's advise, you gotta get a plumber to get that taken care of, they're not gonna...
If it's on their side.
Yeah, if it's on their side, that's right. If it's on our side, of course, well, they take care of it right away. Um, and then provide that cammering service for them. And if there is not the cleanout, that we install the cleanout, like you talked about before. Uh, at least as far as I can tell, you know, this is something, number one, a number of our residents have come to expect as a service that's been provided by the city over a number of years. And I think it's very beneficial for our customers and also for us in the long term about providing that and, and, uh, being able to identify and tell the customer whatever the problem is quite quickly. And give them a possible workable solution. Now, if it's big roots that you can't get through, you know, there isn't gonna be anything that we can do on.
Right.
What about the, um, you know you got a letter from someone about ESG doing it? And told them that we need to get a plumber, you remember that?
Yes.
Well, what, what we had?
Uh, contacting with ESG, they had said, no, that's absolutely not. Oh, I'm sorry, just to go back to remind what Mr. King, I think, is talking about, was an accusation that some of ESG people were going back and doing plumbing repairs on their own. Uh, talked with ESG, they assured me, number one, that is absolutely not their policy, and if they find out about anyone doing that, they will be former employees. Uh, the second thing is, is that if they might, they could be, ESG was not aware of that, but it was the case. But if they were an employee who worked for them, but then their second job is working for a plumber, well, then they can, they can do that, because they're working, you know, for a plumber. Or if they have plumber's license, you know, they can, they can do that on their own. But ESG is not in competition on their time with the plumbers.
Thank you for the clarification, but I want to make sure we got that feeling that people would know that, that nothing, that we're doing with that.
Right. And I will send something as a follow-up to ESG to affirm that as well. With that being cleared up, I think we should continue with God's servant.
Question, please. If on our property, city property, we have a backup which pushes it back up into a residence line, can we unplug that?
Yes.
Good. Should anything on our part?
Yeah, we, we unplug and take care of any of the problems if it's on our...
Well, this, this wouldn't, we clean ours out.
Right.
Where we push it back in, the thing was clogged up.
Right, well, that would go back to what you're talking about, okay, really. Because we would then, they would, and, which is what they were doing before. And ESG would go back and, and do the probe, I'm not sure how they do that type of stuff. They go back to address that issue, Mr. Hunt. If there's some backup that got on their side of the line from our issue and everything, well, then they will clear that up.
Good, should.
What other questions or concerns? I think that, uh, from my perspective, we offer a superior service, water and sewer here in the city. We also charge for superior service here in the city. And I think this is one of those services we should provide to people. I've had a large number of phone calls about, we didn't notify anybody about it. People were, their houses, you know, they were used to this service being supplied to them. Uh, it seems like it always happens on Sunday afternoon or Saturday night when they can't get a plumber, and their plumbing system does not work in their house, and we can provide that service. I personally think it's something we should provide as part of our water and sewer system here. I think that'll probably be right. We don't, we don't have any, you know, in additional cost of equipment or anything like that. We have all the equipment to do this and so. I would personally think we move forward. I heard from Mr. Smith, you're okay with it? Mr. Jackson? Mr. Hunt? Miss Bond and Grace? You have concurrence to go back to the old policy, if you would, please? Anything else, Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
Item five is department heads. Uh, Mr. Worthington, I think you're sitting over there somewhere, anything this evening?
I am, no, sir, I'm here tonight.
Ms. King?
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Harden?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Okay. Chief Lynn?
No, so far.
Chief Parker?
Not gonna break it, I'm good.
Ms. Parker?
Well, I'll break it. Um, our last regular session of the Your City program is tomorrow, which is Mayor and Council, so I hope that, um...
Thursday.
Thursday, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
I just want to make sure you're paying attention. I'm sorry. Thursday, I hope to see most of you there. Um, we are going to, um, be catered by Ollam, if that will help kind of entice you a little bit more. Um, and then, um, for Mr. Albrecht and slurring in ceremony tomorrow, we are going to be catered with finger foods by the perfect pair. So she will have, she has a very nice menu.
And this will be a reception after our...
Correct, there'll be a reception afterwards.
On behalf of Mr.?
Mr. Albrecht.
Glad to hear that.
Do you remind me of the time on Thursday?
Five o'clock.
What time?
On Thursday, not tomorrow.
Here.
Yes, it'll be in council chambers.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir, uh, real quick, and I'll have the actual numbers tomorrow. I've walked out and forgot them, but this past Saturday was a very successful, um, neighborhood cleanup in the Creekwood community. We had, uh, or excuse me, not this past Saturday, but two weeks ago.
Thank you.
Uh, we had forty-five, forty-five, um, volunteers. That's the largest crowd that we've had since I've been here. Um, and we picked up in excess of thirty tires and thirty, or three thousand pounds of trash. So I'll have the exact numbers tomorrow to report to you.
Thank you. Mr. Swan?
Yes, sir.
It's been called to my attention that I overlooked Mr. Smith, he's not around, so... Mr. Smith, do you have anything to add this evening?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you. Is there anybody else that I missed, Miss Bond and Grace? I think I got everybody. Hmm? I got Brenda. Ms. King? Hmm? Oh, Chris Warren's behind us. Chris Warren, anything for the city clerk's office?
Yes, sir.
I think that's everybody in the room that we called on. Uh, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the recent personnel.
Oh, good.
Motion say go on, say, say nine.
Aye.
We are moving into executive session.